Yeah, I like your shirt. Here's how. He said that. It's. I had her names here. Then. That's can use my speed to get it. Start the speech.
Nancy Barra. They missed the special.
And I remind you. Yeah. Yeah, if you are in the Burgess. Debbie's problem. So I just mean that for. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Mary. Mary Sophia, we get a family bar.
That's right. So. Get a picture.
I'll send you now.
Give us a few minutes as soon as we're done with the. There we. For. Only break. Take your opportunity.
On, where does anybody need to? I just want to say. So so. We started. Two, two, three. The family. Stand. Stop like. Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you for pointing that out. Think that very, very scared. Have that type of response and ability to communicate. All of our staff, officials to make sure that this. And so this. I saw a feature. That's a lot of water. I read for that. Thank you, Seth. Skinhead.
Awesome.
It's okay.
Thank you.
If you need to say. You, Mr. Elliot. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, man.
My pleasure. Just read some of this here real quick. If you sign it. And then if you'd like to make any comment.
Thank you.
This is a very very publication. Second. Twenty twenty four as the week. Whereas the town of Goodenhurst was with a multitude of families, an essential part of the population, spiritual fabric of our people. And whereas the town. Is that strong? Center of strong communities. That children, that vital. Their families are strong. And that families are strong. And then the communities that connect them. Economic opportunities. Social networks and services. And whereas everyone has a role to play. And be successful. My neighbor organizations, businesses, nonprofits. Seam makers and family smiths. Anywhere as during the week of the second. For the time. Research, they told me to consider how families are better together. And to honor the importance of families and commitment and extend. Special connections that support and strengthen. Here. Whereas during this week, we urge residents of the town of Goodenhurst. Other than single corporations, rather than having to fund them. So. Now, therefore. Of the town of Goodenhurst, do you proclaim the week of November second, 2024? As week of the family, families that are together. In the town of Goodenhurst, all citizens to share this occasion. State day of October twenty twenty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me sign that for you. Like, make any comment, we'll do that and get a picture.
I would, thank. And thank you, Mayor O'Brien. On behalf of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, it is a true pleasure to unite. With the town of Goodenhurst. Residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll get. Thank you.
Please. Put me.
Yeah. Yeah. For this evening. Since we have meetings. If you. Say seven sets. There are ten budget meeting. Here it is.
Mayor, there was. There was an amended agenda. That's bad.
Yeah. There you go.
Right. You need half a second here. I got it. Well, you're. So. Nation special. Um. If you need to mention.
Actually, not so small, it's a small. Yeah, basically. Basically, we had the schedule from the last meeting. They were able to make it. So see if they can. Your questions gonna be here before. Some. Information.
But obviously, we know a lot of schools, we have a lot of groups, and that has sent. Certainly goes into that. Roll to my core taxes. I think for spending money anywhere. We have to spend it on education. C T Allen has a centennial celebration. It looks like after that, he'll just stay.
Um. So we got. Here. We made last. Figure it's time to update you guys some of the. Events that. But people doesn't. And it's just. Kim Head. Andy. We've got Jacob, Dorothy, there's a few that. But. It's very. All of. We want to be sure. We got. Full voice coming. Got that. Eighteen stars. Plus that was. But just to give you. Have a chance all of fun. So you shout to the. The initial thing is. Three more. Uh, doing great. Anyway, the challenge. You know. The. To. What we want to be for a year. With all these things. Is that it's not that. But also that. For future generations. And. So. Um, two more. Kind of. Those. Not creations, those are oats, staples, um, wine stuff. But they're. Everybody's. Tree. So actually, ten years. You can take that. Don't say anybody. Here. And. So that's. First, there will be twelve. Fish. Cause. You. Except behind. Jim, very sure. Um. So. So. One other thing. The first one. Walkway. But ladies. Is. Twinkle logo, yes, we created. All flags change up. Change up. That's what we hear. The three. And. To say. That we are celebrating. Here, there. And look. Hey. So we got. Something. But all of them are reset. They do. So. That's. Oh. That's. The shirts you got. That was the guy off the head.
Very exciting.
I think. P P. So this is the. The. We have to. And it's very much the old country fair on the beat. We've got Ferris wheels, hornets. The big drama. That's sorry. The word. Useful faith all day. And then. Good. How we test. The bird or. We have all of these. It's absolutely. There's.
Can we do the Ferris wheel into the dump tanks like?
Yeah. Here. And if he wants to. The. A lot. But so we're working through that concept not there yet. But we're hoping that. Okay. Can buy a foot in Florida here. Any books? And we have that. So. Thinking. And I did. And if you have. Sugar. You know. You know, and. You know, and. One serving.
Thanks, I appreciate. Our. Today. There's.
We'll get it some more details. We'll just have the. But that's. Sure.
Any questions for C T? Want to like.
A new song. You sure? So if you need. But this whole. Jim. So. But this will be on. The. The leading committee's last. So our last year. Where is all the. Two million dollars. But the committee has. Need to step in. Sure, the reason. What would you say that? This will be. This is. So wanted to. There. Our. Because. So we've been doing. It's not. It's going around city. City. But. For. Four hundred percent. The center. Then. And generations. They. What do you do? Because. Or for. Or. Anything I'm doing. They do this for. They. Well, you. Sure. Then. They. But we want to have. A less. We could really could be brave by our. And you. And we. Ten. Twenty thirty. And that's what this. And if you. And. Um. There's. We just try and. A. Just like. They have told us. With. It's not. It's what. But that. That. They. In the. Give away. The. This. So what you do. Is. On. That when we move forward with discussion. So that. And. This. Either. He is brave. So it will. I. Yeah.
So it's essentially a donor who I did. Does this for. You know, nationwide. Or particularly. Foundation has the center of Florida. A lot of these for various. For various charities and. So like you see how it's. It's it's safely invested. By the profession. And like C G said, this allows to occur. It's just a longer. Asking back that event. And hopefully something that, you know, depending, we don't care, maybe next someone will step up. And. Perfect job. And I continue that. And maybe those proceeds could. Could be part of. One day our kids.
And we would like. And now we. Should. Here. And how, but the vision is it will be a financial or. She invested. That's what it's do. So and how you. Is. They can do the same soon. I mean, don't just say the ones that so it brings all your. So this is. We can do the same. Financial investments. Something. Will be. Be residents, it will be square. You know. Major and I swear this. Whoever may have. May have. Soon as. This. Time enters, you want the title to be. But then it's. Resident. It's. It's. Thank you. First, please. Could ask. It's fine. To fund this. Which is perfect because it's whatever. And then. A lot of. But the evil. Scout. This. Is for. Education. Yeah, certainly. Where's. So. You follow. Or. And you have. And. James. It is. Or super. So this one. Be. Again. Not to that point. All the. You. See. So they would. It. Mark. If. If. And. Issue. But this one. In other ones that you manage is. Started. If there were. Develops. This one could be that for future generations, for our kids, for new generations. And that's really. They want to do. To be a legacy. Just. But something. Something that. It's.
Any questions?
I'm just curious if you. I'm curious if you guys. Or. Anything. We need to have. Um, it's. But. You. It's. So. The. You know, this is the. This is the. Unhealed. For. It's not. You. Where you get that. But. The universe. There's the power of this. That. We go. Challenge. And. Needs a lot of them to. Have. Biggest. Who. But I'm just. So. There's. Or. So. And sort of. There is not. K T A asked for. This. This is not. Just. Yeah. It. It's. What.
It's really after some. So. Would. It would be, you know. Some someone or who boasts with the right capacity and the right vision, right?
And the room is built.
And is at the same. So. That's. He's looking for if that happens to. And it's out, that would be amusing. It doesn't. That's what we. Doesn't cry itself. And. And. It's the tremendous. Great. Now. For. People. And it allows us to do some things like that, you know, video. That those monsters that. With the racing line. Is. Sam, so if that, if that. Visuals are out there, that. That. Station.
Like. Do. So let's assume that's not. The. And. And. You're sure. We just. Headed. Damn. And that was actually. A bunch of. Delivering some. We also. They so. That was. Definitely. Share. In speak.
So separate from that, but C T and committee are. Is. Support. And the ever forward, put together those files, also put together for. Open back to the council that it's. Will prove that says that at time. The person. That. It's important that it can become. If it lets the understanding and support of council. That should be.
We want to. So.
And that. And this month. It is. They were. Just work.
And what is.
It's. Or small.
So.
Yeah. Any questions to answer in terms of. Yeah. Comes first.
Hi.
It results in getting seven sets of meetings and. Um, actually. It's two. Better. Seven. Hearing minutes, September tenth, twenty twenty four, seven months. Session. Minutes. September sixteen, twenty twenty four. Up. Budget hearing minutes. The September twenty third, twenty twenty four, jump. Intuition. Intuition. Seven twenty four, twenty twenty four, elsewhere, sure. And the September later, twenty four, July. Station. Public. Truck minutes, a lot of meetings. Council, you can approve all of these as one agenda item. G C. So it's so so. Which you should approve, I have the first data, seven. Eight minutes, silver saying. Okay, second, it's a personal. Questions, comments, or concerns. See none. And going to help the person here. I.
Um.
I said. This is resolution, prices and. Opportunities. Uh, reset is already. This is I N C one four dash zero. Zero, zero, three, oh, yeah, straight. I think it stays his own. There. This is a very still transmission of. Super set back. To give us one. Feet to eleven. Eight feet inward. Assistant. Get attached. Some kitchen. This particular. Zero. You have some public comment. Grabbing. This is. Charts. Congratulations. I'm actually Senator Mayor. Twenty four, that's nine. And it's only three. That's three, national. Running the. Um, since most of this is, so you know, it's also been a comeback. But. Very fairly justified. Um, this is an existing house in. Two thousand and three, there on the corner, ten, both damn street. Um, and I'll start out by saying this. Town back in two thousand and three, it was permitted in its location, but it's today. Um, at that time. At the time, most of the. This is only assigned on five time areas. So that's how we. Are using that location. Um. While this is. So now it's submitted a building permit and renovation to that interior and exterior. Uh, not increasing the footprint of the house in any way. But part of that. We're going to be applying for. Included cover.
Included covering and partially closing, with the debt on the back of the system. Um, so through that, we do, it identified that. The non setback, the reason for that. Is under. Why it is considered, was called a, a non continuous form of law. Why it's that, what you kind of both defines a lot of it is it has soon run down. And a front end, and you're supposed to find out in the yard, it's a toilet. It's not defined basis to a wing, but to a right wing. Three ten, that means it's undeveloped, but it is a padded writing, so it does sign the definition of code. Um, based on. So that's if we had a body that is pregnant, and typically the reason is public, public having. Um, for now, to your story, it's required twenty five feet off of two writing. So up on the tail and on the tent. Which they need those, and we should give it that. Thirty five feet off the back. Again, no, we should put that. But on the side of the line, it required to be fifteen. This existing debt, it's there, that needs putting a roof on. Attaching to the house at eleven point eight feet, so it's less than fifteen. However, it does line up the existing house, it does sit there, doesn't approach any closer to that side. So eleven point eight, so what that also triggered is this, is the. Um, for the structure with expanding, that also why this requires, because we're expanding and not forming. Um, that is the reason for this very place, uh, what he's doing is existing pass with no increase in purpose areas, so it's out there. Um, the area that we're not making, the sport area show, it's still only thirty percent, we have concern with that. Um, the awesome discussion is the money, about the second, so that it is functioning upon. Um, they're not entirely susceptible, because they're not adding batteries, just a second, and it's not a lot of stuff, but you get it, it's adding. The health department is not requiring them to be susceptible. Um, um, it's probably. And also because you're not having any more purpose to the property, there's no firing from some of additional stolen attention on the slot. Um, so other things, eleven point five. There is the, that no side setback, is disapplying dollars to the town's code. In terms of the governor, you board, you go, do this up for me on September seventeen, and then I thought for the discussion. And at the end of the discussion, they just found. I think, I think, they say something back that ten is not a valid right, that would be, that can be reproached. Um, and so they. They, they did feel that justification for the variance, because I would also say, if this was an interior lot. Because it's eighty foot wide, be a ten setback on that side, so. That all kind of comes together, and why they, so they made the recommendation to you all, to approve this by vote of four to zero. Um, in terms of the public notices, we sent them out, and you see back seven in support. And four in opposition, and one that had no opinion. Um, about this request. So that's my new presentation, if you have any questions, then again, it's coming to.
Brad, can you address, so I understand that it's an undeveloped version. Um. And if you did eliminate, require twenty five foot. Setback for that particular portion. How is that, because it, I, it's, it's a two parter, so it's eliminated twenty five feet, and then thirteen, thirteen point two foot north side bearings. So, or there's one in the same.
It's one in the same.
So really, you really don't need to.
Correct, so one variance allowed. Age. Overpack.
That's already.
Correct, correct, and it was completed, you have the firm, if this variance is given this evening, then we'll be able to go back tomorrow, the next day, on our side.
Because. The non. That we can't.
Can't. We said, say, this house is not, can't do that. But we can, can, a specific variance, certain nature, like.
Also, any additional questions? Yeah, there's. There is some comments. We go ahead, but this is not.
The interest of time. See, uh, if, if someone's about to supply, he's about.
Something about. So we had a couple people who all defer this, because you. It's too early. Struck. Oh, that was for the, sorry, I just. Debbie. And S. This, I. Is there any other? Yes. Uh, which is over, there is, which is to approve various C twenty four dash zero nine, zero zero. It's true. Um, person. Okay, second. David. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, begin voting with councilor's minutes. Uh, hi. All right, so. Sword is.
Thank you, guys.
Except I didn't need contracts, and one, so third act, and that was true, S E three, phase two, seventy seven. Three, seven, dash, four, four, three, dash, A. Staff recommends. All. And present on the site.
I mean, I don't think. So.
It's the basics, I think.
The basis is that we'll first get the contract and entry, and then we're going to get the project out. We can put that with color, so hopefully we can get the cost in. And then this is with the, uh, cost of the house, it's going to be after that. But this is that next step, actually start seeing the project, so we'll see.
So we make sure that. T A said. Correct.
Yes, sir.
So.
Um, so. And, um, so. We're going to talk about. It. Because the. What else is the plan? Uh, was committed to. See. Put. In the. And. We have a great. Not mentioned. Um, it also. Have something that everyone. First, um, the baby. Rosenman. He. Got areas, where. He, in all the versions. That he wrote. To be raised, but. And then, well, on these sides. And. Both. And so one of them is written, is that. They've been fixed down. And. And especially. It's part of. Area. They could certainly. Form. The right. There. Because that doesn't matter. That's. And so. And. The other thing is. It also. It also says in the report that, per the theme of contract, that anyone being done substantially at the same time, regardless of both the visitation. Got to call that to be included in the. The theme of, um, agreement. So there's no mention of the pot of water, so now anything. Is there more? Yeah. It's something else. It's, yeah.
Yeah, well, what's in this case, it's not, it's the fact that we can't afford. To get additional monies for the pot of water at the same. So right, and try to focus on getting us some of the projects done and funded. Uh, because I knew us, especially at the last decade. Uh, and then we'll try to get the funding for the pot of water soon. I mean, you can only afford what you can afford.
So, you know, just making a lot of the markets. It's not, it's not sewer. And it's. Another set of. The funny.
Okay, so what means that? What? I didn't have money to buy them out of the stack. Vision. These guys. So those are free. And the other, the, I don't think. The, uh, what's the. Thing, so that. So this process is independent. What I find with. What I find with. They continue to. But. Something. All paid. In this. Okay.
I mean, when we first submitted these. Dollars to B M and V M, it was probably far as years ago, and those costs have escalated significantly. So we're trying to figure out what we can do to make sure that we can get the project funded, and make sure the cost of it makes sense. We got three point zero, you can explore the central base for the pot of water system. We were hoping to get probably seventy five percent of this central base worked up. So I keep control of the cost escalations.
The, is the last topic of the street, being a struggle with. You know. Because the V M. The long include the vast. Street, which are majority. But that's pretty. It's kind of.
I'll talk to you, but I'm trying to, again, get the cost of putting houses, so we can achieve this one, to get the product started. Um, so I think we had reduced scope a little bit, but I can get that information, so you have the next.
See. Because I just. The whole. The whole is. Correct. So there's a lot of. The entire. That the folder is now going to come. And. West. But we're not going to be collecting a lot of. It, it doesn't make. It's the whole. The town. Funded. They, uh, to do. Give. The. Elevation. It, it was easy and. That was all. That road is. Probably. Twenty three inches below the grave of the. And already. That was. It's probably the. But. Great. This person. On the rest. Did not. Yeah, so, so we're. To keep water flowing into it, and then it sits down. And you can't get. And now the. Bringing. Below the age, she's going to step off the property, another property, and it's going to drop. To this. And I think. Drive. So. So this. Um, not sending. Has one. That they might. Free. So. Then. They. So. They know. They. You. The amount of. Creating. They can exist. Yeah, that's even the. Nature. It cannot. It's going to happen. It won't happen. People. Well, and below the grave. City. So, yes.
Remind, saying the design that was presented to town council has not changed. And.
Real, yes. I mean. I asked. You can see that. You see every face around. That was the. So we, we were also. And it wasn't. But what the. It's not good. See, I'm still. You. They. It definitely.
Uh, engineering. It'd be bad, we'd think that if they, uh, they're. It's. My system would be like. But for, because I saw them, it's okay, we still put in six feet, six inches, but. You know, it's gray, and we just raise the floor when we start. It makes it seem like to me that's.
I mean, I think.
People. Do you do that? This level. So. And, yes, that's all the problem.
I mean, and it was only. Yes. Okay.
The same. Since that part of. Let me, maybe there. There. Was your. If you please. Because. To. Questions.
Down. Did you ever have anything that you saw, uh, like a. On site change, or?
Wrong. Okay, I'm lower provision, so I, I don't want to ask you all.
Particular. Yeah. So. Remember. It's a challenge. For. Speed. Chose and do choose to have. Stand streets, so. They move, change, challenging, um, love them, but they're finishing, and these are the parts that, you know, you decide some for years. So, you know, every storm can. Hey. Uh, just went through that. Yeah, if anyone is meeting, that's not stable. A problem. The, let's remember that it's not, it's not as underused, but lots of this is. He's thinking around. You have to. Full funding to do the entire. Party. Plan destruction, big funds to come in, that is fun. It's from four three seven. Two thousand and seven. Eight. Any. That's what parts exist then, so let's, let's go ahead, pause. Hold up. This is. That acceptable for council. Just begin to. Do we need a table? Just. Oh, sorry. Oh, there's something. Well. Ask that.
Now.
Or is there? Two seven. Two seven.
Okay, so then maybe it works to make the drugs.
Session that you did at the same time if we had all funding for in seven, seven, seven. Because the funding was solid sound here.
So be, so there's some that we experience any additional cost situations. It is be proud of, so.
Elevation balance, I know we have it's giving and just being one rate, one foot below this, it's very good. And just who is saying so they need it. They want to two. And it changed. Set the standard same time. Shall we talk a big event? Here's the day. I mean, yeah, it's so it's that that you're a great thing. All of this be they coming on through. So it's so we're sort of creating confusion and we raise three feet, four feet. It's like we're not being I mean, that's
such a good process. Those, those items are still to mind. It's not exactly what they say. You're justifying to do with the BCA, getting your funding making it make sense to the, to save Bima right there. I just want to be clear on this is not all of that is team. If you said changing these things, is that what you said?
But if that's what engineers put together, that's what the process is. Engineers in
because that was
and if you have
it's here. And it's getting these, yeah, so it's even though I'm going to make sure we get all the you make sure we can destroy itself. This grass um, is the go engineer stuff up here, right? That's into that, uh, just in square.
We state my name and address again. I'm Jason Barlow. The lore of Hannibal Lulu was very important to us. We've been in that about this project since, uh, my first notes were maybe two thousand and eight too. It's been a long time since, but the just never um, so we hope we can get more just like the, um, uh, the way the scope and sequence reads, it says that they look to grade the work powers aside back to existing issues. If you look at there's easily two feet. There's a much more understanding that are both something back to the A's. And what I'm saying about it is um, it said that when you whatever the image is done, that you will take the that to an occupational condition. What's that mean? Are you guys here? Hey, it's on the stuff and discuss the same I was so challenging this that has really had that I think is very decent and I've years.
Sorry.
So it's just very logic, you know, I've done never years and um, plastic illusion and I don't know, you need that. And to your, you know, the brain is, it's lower it's one, they push it back and it's an issue and unless you're raising you're facing this, then leave some that is just leave us alone.
So I just want to be clear. A lot of that is very standard contraction. Language, it doesn't mean, so twenty seven feet of water, so I said that an operational condition generally every new project, but things back that is, you know, remember you're talking about this to be in some other, some other so let's have the details in terms of that language because it's, it's just standard work. Activities. The other piece of this is, you know, we'll look at this, the, the, but the water it may be separate and it's not, you can give up one front check, I mean, this water is not ready for other that, that piece of the water is a large part of that whole set. So, you know, perfect rule, do it all, absolutely. The line outside of funding some of these things to make these, because we know this is very so you can't just say that right back here having these discussions and before he talked about this in great, even that feel older, even more standard for you that, uh, you were here presently, you know, it's if you're to, to weigh in on, or we can follow three most standards and try to do our own thing. So we're doing things that a character be be a resident there for perfect. So gotta get some to drop off. Well, you know, when I but there are good suit, who do know these processes like states are, you know, these stability you know, different things to try to stabilize the base so it doesn't change as much. That's what you're looking for is we're striving to do to make sure it stays in the way that the water has
Well, my name said that style, you didn't even really it'd be replaced with this very big style. You know, I'm sure we know that to the just they join the development station of
Thank you for, appreciate it. Fair, huh? All taken inside until instead of side two, this is bringing you improvements from night to day, um, this word is to pursue some contracts, so
No, this is something that was budgeted, uh, we discussed at, uh, the budget workshops.
I'm so many questions. Looking for motion to approve, uh, bid and review for second. We should buy councilperson that at seven. If some questions, council. Do you not invoke councilperson here?
Hi.
Thank you, council. I said this approval of the all this this one year school resource officer agreement. The attachments are difficult, set up changing sign effort to make it as fair as possible.
Yes, I likely spoke to the, um, Orange County Public School Chief this morning, so it looks like everything's going to be okay for this. We were in negotiations for quite a bit, but, um, we were, I was not going to sign off on a three-year contract with absolutely no no pay raises according to, or you know, it wouldn't be necessarily responsible for us to do that. So we decided a one-year contract.
Me certainly appreciate you pushing hard for the net on that. You know, listen, I want to make sure that our kids are safe and that we have everything that's needed there. But I also areas to the town residents. Has to be fair. You know, it's basically a mandated anyway, so she was able to get that as far as continue grade up, but permission to approve. Proven councilperson. Say, councilperson. Any questions, comments, or concerns, council? See, I can invoke councilperson needs. Except I am for brief date for their appointments reserved. Um, this is by middle set, little sex dating, see. If you, uh, that's so based that that activity.
Yes, the area that's right in front of the, uh, roster property. So you have a lot of, um, potholes and so on and so forth. And this is something that we discuss at budget workshops as well.
Any questions for Robert? Yeah, Robert, this is where the areas.
It's, it's not something recently repaired. We repaired it, I think, when we had it under warranty with the, uh, developer of the roster property. But I don't believe you've repaired it since then. I think Orange County Utilities maybe did a little repair there, but it would, anything that's done is not under warranty.
And staff too, that said that area flooded based upon their lack of power to the phone, uh, in all work. Their water, their service. Staff is again, that's another area. So that's air. So basically you have no reserve. Some places after you're based upon nature. Uh, so there's some given paper. So I know we don't want to lose the base. Already for second. So so everybody love, hey, everybody love the ice rink, so the safe as long as they're previously any additional questions, concerns, or see none, be anyone um, next step is, I got B one, this is a proof ball. Three persons of both equals seven. Any additional information that's not the fact, council?
No, sir.
Looking for motion to approve, council. Motion to approve, councilperson needs, second. Questions, comments, or concerns, council? Councilperson needs. So again, so for consideration, uh, staff is requesting the approval set for ten including standalone battery. Let's get it, sir. You the last do facilities, so we're incorporate that into the design. Um, so proceeding that is the final concern. And then you have the phase in program sets for uh, I think for saying, yeah, so during actually a shared vision because of the need to accessibility to so and I to, you know, from second in, that was so you know, everything this one, you know, directly and for us to move forward. This will be, um, for standalone and it's phase different area. I'm talking, yeah, just there's in turn to do the then add to be all the phases. Then add a few more phases into the contract, not just some. Forty-five eighty percent used for the. Um, tonight. Us moving forward some. Documentation for restaurants, as you see it. And included the kitchen renovations that we discussed on. Yeah, that's a big phase. It's, yeah. It's not on that down. Council, any questions for?
I I don't think it's. Cause this is the town.
I think what he says, because when you say something like that, it makes it sound. Be against you and be against the residents and you're the only one burden for residents. Just take the rest of this. But. I idiot.
It's a question to me. When I saw them, I followed what I was. And it's. And. Full foot after. But I'm speaking literally from the. If everything keeps on working, it's possible to be. It's not. Being on this path. There's. Twenty-five. Fifteen one long. I've been for me. And it's just making. Um, lifting.
That's.
Because you said we need to actually.
Couldn't be. Focus councilman because of where I.
It wasn't that. People live outside. Feel that it impacts the.
Same, certain, yeah.
Just keep sort of complicated. You know, we need to find out the pavilion, you know, some other curvies, follows, whatever you put, so we decide, okay. Start forward. All the additional improvements that are looking for. But I think, you know, the town hall, that has been through and been vetted through a lot of meetings that we have. So if you wanna pump this to after the charrette, understand that the charrette has nothing to do with. This design, cause that was supposed to be incorporated into the charrette. Because it's already something that Tom Council has looked at, has discussed with the public.
And my. You would that perception of the red. Or historic preservation or and free.
Yeah, I mean. It's not. That, uh, town sent. That was. It's a great. I've learned some ideas about town sent. Wasn't necessarily town hall, did you go back? Which is just that. Center. To also include this bathroom. But not. The ten fall specific. He said. As a concern. Day online. So we have that should have had. Council, is any contact to that? Immediate over?
No, sir.
So is, uh, councilperson paying side for?
Do you show?
No, and I just received one that was sent over to me at sixteen this afternoon. What time is that?
You have, you have me. This to be here. Of the. So, and there's. Well, okay. It's not. If you look at. It shows. The kids. That dates. So they have known. The little.
So. Was my saying that? School. Did not want. And that's the reason that they. As well as. Social centers.
Well, our. Who did any.
Does. I mean, I, I. Safe. Ability dollars. That's how I'm taking. It's funny. Uh, in getting this school design, uh, just having discussion. There's an issue. The county, there's a sheriff sits there every day. And you're not going to attack. And and that's in. As a school, but it's funny to be wrong.
I mean.
It's. Since it's it. Future. Saving that's the time. Issues that we. And this we added on a little bit. Tell me. Ended as we. Stay mandated adjustments to it. Statute. Being leased, uh, so we would be clients. So we did that. But obviously with the. There's gonna happen. So there's a lot of interest in those areas. In conjunction with PHOAs. For the school, we're soon to change.
I mean, I, I know that the. Mister, when he said, um. Yes, so. But he is. Now, I also. Nothing. They are. It'd be. What? But. So the police. And it's. So, yeah, I mean. And the road that they build with a lot of these. Those people. And I hope these things go in order.
And that is part of every area. Existing bridge. Doesn't enable for them to use. So that's another reason. So then a. Certainly something. Yeah, so.
So the. The mission. Basically. And both. Okay. I'm. Legally. Where. You. These. We. We try. Eight three, you're teaching your place. And. All of them. Uh. And. The. And. So. And. So. All. He's here. So.
He said. Really need to. Sit back.
Okay.
I think it was. Spite. Again. We didn't. And I don't have any objection. That's. Look at them. They're. Beautiful. It didn't. Be.
I.
Otherwise.
Yeah. They. They all.
It is based on the speed. Stat. It's just. Specialization. Yeah. So. Do you?
I.
Where?
No, I.
Right. Still.
So. On. So. On. You know. The. For. Everybody. Thank. We. Then. We. So. He is. Do. Yeah. Yeah.
Good. Good. So.
It's. Are you? But. We. If. If you. Feel. If. You. Not just. Know. Why. You know. Or. Okay. Eight. Four. I think.
So. This. May have. To. So. A lot. Stay away from town council. Okay. And like most of us. So. So. It's. Probably. Stop.
Yes.
Yeah. Eight. Everybody.
Yeah. That's what I'm. It's. It's like.
You stay away from the circle.
And.
Your forty is very valid. Most eight is literally like. Seven, they say. Ten.
And. One. And.
There's. It's. There's also a few things. If. If. Was it just that? Are you? The person that. And be and accepted. But some of these suggestions changes. And one of the things I also believe to make sure that. She from the school.
Yes. I. I.
We need to. Inform. In. Asia ways that we have. Yeah. So. Because should something happen. You know, same day. About. Get set of drills. Sure. Doing everything that. And. That.
And.
And. Also. That we're getting ready to begin. May. I see may. No. It. It may impact. It does your. Hope. It's your. You change. You change some of the thinking. So just something to consider. And. I did. I haven't. This. First. She. Pay. All of like is. But. See you again. I don't have this. Yes.
I mean. I. But you guys. I have people. Including. And. That the people who live on. Eastside. Eight. Legally. Cannot leave them. It gets running too.
It's very possible because it's. It is not a. Very important thing to do. So we. I think when we started talking about having golf carts, we had to make all these decisions and we took. Path of the peace. Safest. He says. In your. Let's. Your. Their parts. Faces that may have. You know. It's. There may be some of those places that we didn't point out at certain. And we use an Asia basis that it be.
I was. They. From. Anthony. Name. We do. Well. And. In. For. The. Yes. But. It. Was. They. You weren't. So. It. That they. Those roots. And.
Because. And. So. From. It's. So. Okay.
Yeah.
We. So.
I was.
Be. Good.
Yeah. I'm. 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 People. Being. Where. Really. Drop. It all. Thing.
The first thing I have. That comes. And staff.